That's okay. It's not any worse than what we've had at some times. That's right. Good morning. Let's call the planning commission meeting to order at this time. Craig, would you give us our invocation for it, please?
Father, we do pause at this time of the year. I'm so grateful and thankful, Lord, we think about all many ways that you blessed us and how you have provided for us. And you continue to shower your grace upon us, Lord. It humbles us and it helps us, Lord, to understand where our blessings come from. Lord, it also reminds us of our responsibilities. I pray, Father, that you would give these gentlemen the wisdom that they need today. Father, they would make good and wise decisions that are in keeping with your will. Father, I thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. Father, we thank you most of all for those men and women who have sacrificed everything so that we might assemble together and conduct this county in freedom. Father, I pray that you would guide us today and that we would leave here today more mindful of the ways that we should thank you. And, Father, more ready to do your, to do your will in our lives. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. Okay, at this time, we have consideration or approval of the October 30th, 2014 minutes.
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Old business.
Okay, the first item under old business is a conditional use request of Gary Williams at 1043 Monterey Road. The property is located on the north side of Monterey Road. This is the actual parcel here. This shows his house and his existing shop here. The addition's going to go on the west side. Here's a site plan. It's a fourteen by sixteen addition to be used for storage. And this is just a view of the existing business, Big Boar Bikes. And this is the area where the addition is going.
Is that a-
This is scheduled for a hearing on Monday. We haven't received any calls.
Is he planning on moving the fence, or is it just that small of an area? Small of an area? Okay, fourteen by sixteen? Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions on the old business? Okay, new considerations?
Okay, under new considerations is a dimensional variance request from Edward Hutton on Holly Bush Road. The property is located on the south side of Holly Bush. There's a private drive going in called Rodeo Drive. You may remember that previously we had three other property owners who came before you and requested a dimensional variance as well. These are some of those parcels. They were approved in October of 2013. Mr. Hutton's lot only has twenty-five foot of frontage out along Holly Bush Road, and the RE1 zoning requires one hundred, minimum lot width or frontage. This is just an aerial view of that property out there. This is a view along Holly Bush here. This is one of the lots that's already has a home on it. You can see Rodeo Drive coming in. This is just a pole barn on the property. And this is a home that's already been built at one of the properties on the, at the back. This is the lot, the thirteen point nine acre lot that Mr. Hutton's wanting the variance for now.
Okay.
And that's a private drive?
It is. It's a private drive, and they will be required to sign a restrictive covenant document on the road saying that it will, it will remain private until it's brought up to county specifications.
Okay. Any more questions on that? We need a motion to put set the public hearing for twelve fifteen fourteen, correct?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Morrison. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Wonder if we were gonna get a motion or a, or any kind of movement on that. Okay, we got anything else on new considerations?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay, site plan architectural review?
All right, today we have a site plan architectural review for Briar Hill Baptist Church at 707 Highway 469 North. The property is located on the corner of Gunner Road and Highway 469. This just shows all of the parcels that are owned by the church. This is a aerial view. You can see the existing church. They also have a modular here that's similar to what the school district uses for like classrooms. The red box is where the new building will be going. The site plan shows the new building. It's a sixteen thousand square foot metal building. They're adding thirty-seven parking spaces to handicap. They're gonna have some landscaping at the front of the building and in the concrete parking medians. This is their drainage plan, just showing the elevations. The water's gonna dr- drain to the rear. Mr. Parker is okay with their drainage plan. He has approved it. And this is a color rendering showing what the building will be similar to in materials and colors. Okay, this is the floor plan. They're gonna have a gym or a basketball court here, a stage, and then the outer area is classrooms. These are the elevations, the front and the rear. This is the front and the rear, sorry. Okay, and these are the sides. The sides and rear are gonna be metal, and then the front will have the-
Split. Is that split?
The hardy board finish on the front.
Hardy board finish, okay. Do they have to sprinkle that at all, or is that, how's that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because of the size and everything of that? Okay.
This is a view of the existing church. The addition's going to be behind the church. This is that modular, and it's going to be removed once they complete the new building. You can see their pad here. This is where the new building will be going.
That's really just to the right of that modular, isn't it?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, yeah. If you're looking at that modular, it's just the right.
Okay, and then you can see their existing parking area here. The new parking area will just join that existing, and then the new building will be along this area where the hay bales are here.
Okay. And do we have to have any action on this?
To approve it, yes, sir.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the architectural review plan on this for Briar Hill Baptist?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith. Any more questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Anything else on site plan?
No, sir.
Next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 30th, 9:00 a.m. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Second by myself. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, this time, we will call to order the, let's see, we got the work session, call to order. And we have attendees Guy Warren and Paul Megason from Risk Management Partners. If y'all wanna step forward, we'll check out what you guys have to say.
We have a-
How are you?
Okay.
We have some of the insurance policies are coming up for renewal.
Okay.
The public officials liability, which- The law legal liability, which actually covers the sheriff's department, and also the workers' compensation. The public officials, the law legal comes up December the first, and the workers' compensation comes up January the first. We went ahead and brought the workers' comp because we got it done. Normally, we'll do this and then come back with the workers' comp, but it's, it's all put together. Just, we did it in a summary fashion this time, just thought that may be a little bit easier for y'all. I know I've had to put too many charts and graphs in there, and y'all really enjoy that, but-
What, what are you really trying to say, Paul?
I'm really trying to say y'all don't like my charts and graphs.
I mean, just come on and say it.
But just to give you a summary, if you look on this column right here, these are the renewal prices for this year. The law legal liability, it's actually about a five and a half percent rate decrease. We've got more employees this year in the department, and that's really helped the way that numbers of employees. And as y'all recall, this is a Pacha program for the National Sheriff's Association. So when we renew it, it includes the dues for the sheriff's department to be in that association. Guy and I talked with Sheriff Bailey and Pete, and they'd like to continue that process as well. We checked with some other companies on pricing, and they, they can't compete with the Sheriff's Association program. And with that, the public officials program still with CNA insurance company. We actually have about a nine percent rate decrease this year on that as well. And on the workers' compensation, we marketed that as we do every year. Nobody could compete, in fact, nobody wanted to compete with the Mississippi Public Entity this year. The difference in the Mississippi Public Entity program, they did have a great increase on their police class code. And it's the only class code they had a rate increase on. But they had to increase that by a dollar per hundred dollars of payroll. Y'all have had a really good experience with them this year, which will, and we've got every credit that we can get out of them. We squeezed it down. And the great thing is, I was looking back, I think 2004, the county was paying four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in workers' compensation premium with a lot less payroll than what we have now. It's a testament of the safety that has gone in force, you know, with the county, and also just pushing these guys and making them work against each other as well.
And the interesting thing to me, and Mr. Rodney, about dealing with workers' compensation, he'd probably know how much Mississippi Public Entity has put forth into keeping and writing your account. The manual premium on this-
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And you're buying it-
If you had no credits. So that would be the manual premium, so they, they give you all of this money.
And that's why the other companies just can't, they cannot compete with it. I mean, it's just-
And just to, you know, as we've talked about in the past, Mississippi Public Entity is a self-insured group. So you join several with everybody in the group. I called the workers' comp commission just to make sure that they're in good shape with them, and they have glowing reports about them. I called and checked on their financials at the county, also got a copy of their financials, and they're still in very good shape. And they've got almost two dollars of surplus to one dollar premium writing, and that's, that's really good.
Okay. Good deal. All right, any questions?
No.
Okay. So this is gonna be on, we don't have-
I've got it down here.
You got it down here? Okay, great. I appreciate you guys.
Appreciate y'all. Appreciate y'all letting us-
Paul, thank you for the speech and your backup right there.
Guy, thank you for standing there.
Yeah, guys, Guy actually said something today. Thank you, Guy. Yes, you did good. Okay, at this time, we have Ms. Sharon Womack from the Department of Human Services. If you want to come forward, and I guess you've got Waylon Hamlin, is that correct? Okay, if you want to have him come on.
Morning. Sharon Womack, Division Director with Mississippi Department of Human Services. And as some of y'all know, I've taken the position in our state office in Jackson, and we have recently appointed a new county director for Rankin County. His name is Waylon Hamlin, and I wanted y'all to meet him. Let y'all meet him today, since y'all be working with Waylon in the future.
Okay, good deal. Good to meet you there, Wayne.
Yes, sir. Glad to meet you, too.
Good to meet you. Where do you live at?
I live in Pillahatchee.
Pillahatchee?
Yes, sir.
We won't hold that against you.
That's good, that's good.
Well, we might look up.
What is it about, I guess every time we turn around, we have someone that's appointed or whatever, it seems like it ends up in District Four. Is there-
It's the quality of people.
That's what I've kinda figured.
Ah, it's just our little piece of heaven, and we tried to keep secret, but it just-
Slipping out now.
Keeps going now? Okay.
Keeps getting out.
I agree with Johnson, it is a slice of heaven.
Well, welcome aboard. We appreciate you.
She's learning fast, isn't she?
That's right. If, you know, if you listen to your counterpart there, you know, I've known her a long time, and she does a great job, and she lives in my district, District Three, so, which I know is a slice of peace of heaven, too. So if you listen to her, you'll probably go a long way, so I can assure you that it sounds like that you'll be well on your way to helping Rankin County. We appreciate you being here.
Doing all I can, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. If y'all need anything, I'm still around, y'all, I'll let them know.
Yes.
Yeah, and I'll send that to y'all, too. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay. This time, we have, thank you, Sharon.
Thank y'all.
This time, we have Mr. Craig Slay, Board Attorney.
Just a quick update on the Department of Corrections location possibility. Got an email yesterday, yesterday, April, from Ms. Kathy, I can't pronounce her last name, Gudrez?
Gudrez.
Yeah.
Kristi.
Kristi.
Kristi Gudrez.
I meant Kristi.
Yeah, I've talked to her a couple times.
Yeah. She's, she just let me know that the decision makers there at Department of Corrections are very much in favor of their move to the LJDC location. And the only request made was, can they get through the holidays before they try to organize and get the logistics together? And I told her that I would share their request with you guys. I felt like there would be no issue with that short delay, and then right after the first of the year, we'll get busy trying to get the logistics worked out to get a move there.
Okay.
Who are their decision makers?
Well, that's a good question.
Now- She's one of the, I can assure you, she's one of the top level, so when you-
She's involved in the, in the chain of command.
Right.
She mentioned a name-
Williams?
Yeah. Yes, and indicated that there was complete buy-in, even at the highest levels.
Right.
That's good.
And then I got a follow-up email from the deputy director saying amen to what she just said, and we're ready to, we're ready to go.
Wow, that's better than I thought it'd be.
Good.
It's a lot quicker than I thought it would be. I wanted you guys to be aware that they requested to start officially getting things together after the first of the year.
Right.
So unless y'all have a problem with that timeline, I'm gonna tell them, let's go.
Yeah.
Go.
I think that'd be a great, great time.
I would think they need that time anyway.
Yeah, they kinda do.
Yeah. Yeah, that's reasonable.
Okay.
Good deal.
So that'll work out, that'll be a savings.
Well, and they've revamped, they're in the process of revamping and are revamping right now of the Rankin County satellite, too. So, you know, as far as over at Flowood over there, so they've got a lot of moving parts and everything else, too, so, over with the female satellite over there, so. But that, in itself, I'm glad to see that they're moving ahead that quick. I mean, that's, that's a testament that they're-
I don't wanna speak for Ms. Laura, but I think my impression was that they see a lot of opportunity-
Right.
-in that LJDC building, and so it remains to be seen exactly what possibly could happen down the line.
Right.
And I don't wanna oversell it, but-
Right.
They're, they're very much interested in options that could be available to the department that are provided by that space.
Good. Okay.
Good deal.
Well, thank you.
Yes. The second item of our session is a discussion of some things that are going on with the Tax Colloquial Office that involve two electrical utilities in particular. One is Entergy, the other is Southern Pine. Oftentimes, and this relates specifically to waste management, oftentimes, people have folks that come in to take care of untabled waste management accounts. Oftentimes, there is a suggestion, I haven't lived there in so many years. I don't live there, and rather than just taking the customer's word for it, the process has been that they will contact right there with the person standing at the window. They will contact the appropriate electrical utility and ask, when was the power changed out of this individual's account into another account? Because that will generally tell you when they stopped living there. It's a way to confirm dates that you're being provided, which goes back to what they need to pay for the waste management services. If they live there, they need to be paying those managers. So it's a cross-check for the information that you're providing, that's being provided. What they have been doing is providing the electrical utility with the address of the customer. Don't ask for name, don't ask for any other information. They provide, our folks provide the address and ask, what is the date that power was cut off? All right? So that's, that's the sum total of the transaction. The electrical utilities, in recent studies, have been refusing to provide that information to the Tax Colloquial Office, asserting that it's private information.
Yeah.
I say, bunk. We're providing the address, they are providing a date.
Right.
There is no private information involved.
When you're talking about this, are we talking mainly, and I would think we're talking specifically homes and stuff like that, instead of like, because usually in apartment complexes and stuff, utilities are paid for by the-
We have so very few, Greg, that involve multifamily.
Right.
What we're talking about is-
Standalone?
Private, single-family businesses.
Right, okay, good. Yes.
And, you know, some of these are probably mobile homes, but they are-
Right, standalone.
Same family, yeah.
Correct, yes.
Good. So that, that's, that's ninety-nine percent of what we're talking about here. The, the short answer is, the utilities don't wanna be bothered. They don't want their people to have to stop.
Right, right.
Get on the system.
It's inconvenient.
Put the information and provide it. They don't want it.
You're just talking, clicking them.
With any reason why not to do it. And so the reason that we're having this conversation is very frustrating to Ms. Judy and her folks, because it completely hampers their process.
Yeah.
The accurate information that they need is not being provided by these utilities, and they have done it consistently in the past.
Right.
All right?
When did it start?
Within the last two months.
Oh.
So they've kind of had a change of either policy or just a change of heart or whatever?
And they may talk to each other about-
Right.
You know, what do y'all, how do y'all deal with that, whatever? We're, we're still getting good feedback from Central Electric, but, you know, when you take Entergy and you take Southern Pine, that's, that's the two big dogs in Rankin County as far as electrical utilities. So that's an awful lot of the data-
Right.
-missing from the equation. So I told Ms. Judy that I would address this with you guys. My suggestion, with your permission, is that we, Mr. Bailey's gonna love this, but-
You woke up then, boy.
When the request for the access to our right of way comes in, we tell them, sorry, that information's private, and I'm gonna be able to help you.
Yeah, it's-
And we will get their attention.
Kinda like what we had to do before on other, other stuff.
It's the only means that we have to get them to stop and think about what they're doing and decide really whether or not that's what they want.
Well, I mean, let me ask you a question, too, because this kinda relates to, when we're talking about waste management, does this, because whenever it comes back to, doesn't it also part of the legislature? Because don't they deem as far as, or am I mistaken on this, as far as we can't forgive any kind of debt?
Well, you're exactly right.
So-
Yeah, I believe it went to that seven years ago.
Okay, so what I'm wondering is if we don't, right, if we don't get some higher-ups involved in this and say, look, guys, we all need to be playing a part in this, because this is taxes. This is actual services.
We do have some, we, we have the ability to exercise discretion where a customer is able to establish they have not lived at a residence-
Right.
-and they have been charged for services at a location that they have not lived at. What we're trying to make sure is that what they're telling us about when they stopped living there is accurate.
Right.
Okay, so we're getting a third party to provide us with some information that lets us know whether our information that we've just received is accurate. And we can deal with that account on the basis of the accurate information provided, but it's a check that we have.
Well-
Basically, we're left, what the customer says, I haven't lived there in a year and a half. If Entergy's not gonna give us the information, how are we supposed to verify that information?
Do, do we know if this is the higher-ups of Entergy and Southern Pine, or is this just a low-level? Is there any possible, and it's just a suggestion, is there any possible way that you could write a letter to-
Oh, Ms. Judy has called all the way up the food chain. I don't know how high up she's gotten in Southern Pine, but she's gotten up high enough to where they refer her to Southern Pine's lawyer.
That's where I'm saying, maybe from you.
Not much higher than that.
That information came yesterday.
Right. That's what I'm saying, from you, from the board, say, look, you know, we're all in this together.
How strong can ours be? How strong can we be, though, to tell them that's private?
I mean, I'm just being silly, but the access to the right of way.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, that's our right of way. It's decided who goes, who goes. They're coming asking for permission across our right of way.
That's correct.
We get these regularly, we get them routinely. We will be dealing with this issue fairly quickly.
It's, it's not if, it's when.
The purpose for me coming to you is that my intention, on the basis of Mrs. Fortenberry's emailing me yesterday about being referred to the lawyer, is that if you will tell me that it is okay to use that method, then when I call the lawyer, I intend to help him understand that if they're going to consider that information private, we're going to consider our right of way off limits, and we'll leave it with them to decide which is more important to them.
Right. I mean, sometimes-
Well, what happens, though, in a case where, you know, the, let's see, the resident, the renter, it says somebody rents the home, rents the whatever home, and they go, they can't get their tag, because sometimes they don't ever turn the power off. The landlord doesn't turn the power off, he just moves one in and one out.
They give us the date that the account was changed, the name on the account-
Well, they don't change it.
Well, I would suggest to you that if the landlord is the one who's on the account, then the person standing up there is not having their tag hung up, because it's not their account.
No, but it shows up their address, though.
But it's still not in their name.
It's not in their name, so it's not hanging up their tag.
Okay.
It's hanging up the landlord's account. Hanging up his, and I kinda got in that discussion with the person over in Flowood that works with us on that same token. I said, if you come up with a better solution, I said, bottom line is, we were around a million or a little bit more than that behind. I said, we're down to, from what I understand, around eight hundred thousand, if I'm pretty accurate on that.
Yeah, I think we're less than that now.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I said, it's substantially lower than when we first came in, because of what we had, some measures we had to take, because these people are leaving during the middle of the night, so.
This is, this is what we have, this is the stick that we have-
Right.
-to get the utilities to cooperate.
Right. I, I mean, I'm- Other counties, same scenario?
I would assume that if the other counties use the same collection methods, Rodney, not every county uses the same type of collection methods. Some don't use the tag as a hook, which frees them up to use other collection methods, but-
What do they use?
No, they all have to use the tag.
Well, they don't have to. They, they can actually refer, they can't do both. They can refer the matters, they can refer to linked one accounts out for regular collection, but they cannot continue to hold the tags up if they choose that. There are some counties that have decided they don't have enough, they don't have enough-
Right.
-in the, on the tag side, so they, they use a collection outfit.
But you can't use both.
You can't do both.
Right. Yeah, I remember you telling-
Some use the old-fashioned way, some use the tag, we use the tag. That's our way of collecting waste management accounts.
Which has been somewhat effective.
Is that gonna be our best way? It sounds like we've still got a long way to climb out of the hole.
Yeah, I think ultimately, this is the way to go, because you're gonna, eventually, you're gonna end up catching most of them.
Well, it seems like we've, you know, over the several years that we've used this tool, that we've definitely received several hundred thousands of dollars that we've recouped. So it is effective, it's just a matter of contendingly, but then you get a snag like this, then that throws a big, you know, a big stick, I mean, maybe it's just a-
Greg's real problem, because she's trying to do her job, and so she won't let them have their tags, so they're upset, because she won't believe what they're saying, and she don't have any way to verify it, so she's stuck-
Right.
-not issuing the tag, and they're stuck getting a ticket down the road.
You know, and I like what you always- You know, um, and I like what you always say, it's kind of a round world theory. I mean, it really is, you know, we all need to be working together. We try to bend over backwards to help these, and this is a for profit.
It, it helped us with the utility permit release.
Right.
Don't forget that. When we had one in particular that did not want to participate.
That's right.
Utility release at all. When they couldn't get across the right of way anymore, they decided that they would be glad to help us.
That's a good thing to help, right.
I'm suggesting we use the same.
Scenario, right.
I don't know what other choice we have. They pretty much pushed us into that.
I, I don't believe in any other areas that we interact with them except right of way requests.
Yeah, I mean, I would see what the attorney has to say because between you attorneys talking and stuff, I think that he's gonna understand that.
It kind of confuse us, that attorney talk, get it going.
That's right.
Come back and just put it out simple to us.
It won't be, yeah, I figure by the time he understands it, or he or she, whatever, you know, it's, I think that it'd be like, oh yeah, I think that's a good idea, it's not that private, so.
So that, that's all that was about, if it's okay with you guys and that. Does anybody have any strenuous objection to taking that approach with them?
I don't.
I don't know what other choice we have, it's really putting her in, it's really, it's really handicapping her.
When you see your electric bell go sky high, you'll know what's up, you know, so.
I'm going to introduce myself, I'm Greg Wilcox.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Greg, I'm gonna leave your, uh, Entergy account number.
Oh, they'll find it quick, that's private. Anything else under you, Craig? Okay, Ms. Laura, county administrator.
I have a few things this morning, the first one is approval to renew the public official's liability in the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars and the law enforcement liability in the amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand nine sixty-two with CNA through Risk Management Partners and authority to issue the check. That one renews December one.
Okay.
Okay, so move.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is approval to renew the workers' compensation insurance for policy year two thousand and fifteen. This is the public entity Workers' Compensation Trust in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And that renews January one.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
No move, second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Alright, next, what I have is gonna look like a repeat from last week, but this is to accept the Consumer Price Index calculations effective October one, two thousand and fourteen, Waste Management Disposal Contract for Residential Waste Disposal Services at a rate of one point seven oh. The one that we had before was the pickup, this is the disposal.
Hmm.
Were your two separate parts.
Okay.
I thought they had been combined, cause you gotta dump what you pick up.
That's true.
Okay.
I guess you don't have to, but probably should. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Johnson, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Next item would be the review of the agenda for December.
Well, yes, first off, we won't have, uh, some public comments that came today.
That's right.
Yeah, we won't have, uh, sharing.
I think that was my mistake for putting them on there, yeah, but it's November and that's the first.
I was thinking say, almost made the year.
Very well, now I only have the month.
I said, almost made the year, I knew you were gonna jump in there.
Not bad.
Mm-hmm. That's one.
That's one.
Hey, that'll just shorten the meeting just a little bit on Monday then, that's, that's a good thing, so. Uh, do we know what, uh, Adam Love is coming for on the Department of Wildlife and Fisheries?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
A, a request for a robotic deer.
Yeah, he came by the office and I talked to him and hear they're requesting a full mount, as they call it.
Yes, yes.
One that would really entice you to pull over on the side of the road and shoot it.
Right.
That's a tough song of God, I can tell you, he's tough.
They run over in the trucks.
They've shot him, everything, he's.
And the robotic part comes in is they get these full mount decoy things and then they put the robot part that moves the ear and the tail and makes, makes it look real.
Would that not be baiting?
I think so. Turn my on.
Let me, let me just ask a question, I mean, this is kind of a crazy question, but this is just full Rankin County, they're gonna be using this deer for just full Rankin County or what's the?
He's supposed to come Monday, I, he could not come today.
Right.
He'll explain to you.
And I figure he's gonna explain, but he's, um, we got, he, he would like to, um.
How much are they?
They're not shooting.
Well, what is?
What did I say, two thousand?
I mean.
Two thousand apiece or a thousand apiece?
That's not too bad.
Well, without sharing revenue, what they gonna get from the guys that.
Probably just two, about two thousand.
Yeah, that wouldn't be much. You know, and you know what? The story, if you hear, they have had people shoot the same deer more than one time. I mean, get arrested and then go back and shoot the same one and arrest him the second time. They can tell you stories about, set up in the same location, he said, he just looks real. Catch the same guy.
Oh, I, I've got stories on, I'll tell y'all later on that, about twenty guys down in Forest County that did the same thing, so, they, they are.
They get them down in a flat down by, uh, Noel's, down through there, him down there. Same guy came through twice, a few, a month, I think, or a few weeks, in the same season, just a little time after.
I didn't have, I didn't have anything to ride in in the gun.
She got him another one.
Anyway, he's gonna come requesting those, that from now.
Okay.
Okay.
And that'll be under public comments?
Yes, he's gonna come explain to you what they need.
Well, I think, that's good.
Just like, oh, Randy Mills.
Has he got a, uh, has he actually got a, uh, some kind of thing we can put up on the screen and show what the?
Just bring the decoy in here, where it work.
I mean, you could, just to see, see what benefit that would, I mean, that would be, I think it'd be great for Chuck to take a picture of that, say, hey, this is.
Yeah, get that tail wagging, that ear's moving, yeah, tough.
So.
Why they just sit in the bushes with a remote?
Basically, I think so.
Oh, and.
Or maybe he said something, I don't think he did it by a computer, maybe I'm not sure.
I, they called a couple down my road, I didn't even know about it, not with the dummy deer.
And usually when, when it's shot and it does not fall, the guys that are smart enough, they're like, just lay your guns down cause they'll be here in a second, sure enough, here they come. They know they've been had, so. Okay, enough on that, uh, got an old business consent agenda items, anybody got anything on the consent agenda items?
Saw.
Anything on the consent agenda items you're concerned about or anything that's jumps out at?
I don't know, let's, let's look at it, Walt.
I don't know about this membership dues of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for building officials or something. Yeah, I guess that, that's probably a good thing.
Who's Donald Green?
He's, uh, he's, uh, they have just appointed him the board directors, uh, water board, water sewer and fire district at, uh, clearing, it's just a, just a member of the board. Hey, we just have to approve them, they select one, we just approve it. He's actually being reapproved, he's actually the president of the water board out there. They just roll over every so often. And they put it, either they reselect him or someone or someone in a place and they send it in to us for approval. I've never seen we turn one down because it's not our, it's kind of their choice, it's gonna work best with them.
It's not a big, uh, agenda, is it? Anybody say anything on consent then?
No.
Okay, what about John Sullivan's office? The only thing I have on John's, uh, and I think I asked the same question on, uh, the approval of the resolution of the adverbal tax exemptions, uh, going on down the Blake of Flowood. I know the Blake of Flowood, I know City of Flowood is not exempting them. Reason being I asked the question, they're coming, supposedly there's some kind of a benefit that they were able to come in with, I guess, that they introduced the, uh, of exemptions, but the building was already built and that's the reason why they said, we're not gonna give you an exemption, that's usually for new construction of, I guess, before they come in or something like that. And that's the only question I had on, I, the reason why I asked that last time was I didn't wanna give them an exemption and all of a sudden it just kind of opened the doors for other type facilities, so.
And who is this?
This is for the Blake at Flowood for retirement homes.
Why would you give them, yeah, why would you?
When it, when it came up the first time about it was an allowable, you know.
Well, it's an allowable, it is allowable.
I don't remember what he said, but the question was asked and I remember.
Oh, I asked the question because I knew it was gonna come up because the building's already built. They knew that going in and then they come up with the exemption, so, you know, is this gonna open up a door for the rest of any retirement homes?
Yeah, but I know two more, two more that have been built, one just recently.
And if we open it up for them, then all of a sudden, that exemption's out there. So we're gonna keep on exempting every retirement home out there, that's the.
I would ask him what the difference is, cause he's familiar with the one that recently was opened, uh, in Richland.
Correct.
And he.
And that's the reason why, like I said, Flowood's not giving that exemption, they're not giving up there.
The Blake hadn't been open in a year.
Well, this one hadn't been open a year.
Right.
It had been open a few months.
But see, you've got several ones that are already open, been open for years, but they're, they can get that exemption also, so.
They can come back, yeah.
Well, they can come back, cause it's wide open to anyone that's a retirement.
It's not new construction.
No.
We declined one or maybe.
You want me to see if John can come up here and answer it?
Yeah, it'd be great, I mean, at least while we go, while we go through this, we can come back to it, um.
I don't, I'm, I'm like you, I don't, but you can rest sure.
I just don't want.
I don't wanna be in here next month if you do this.
Well, and I asked, that's the reason why I asked the question, of Flowood, are y'all exempting the same thing? They said, no, absolutely not, because we don't want to give exemption to this one and all of a sudden, here comes the rest of them.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, a couple of years ago, when he started talking about constructing that one in Richland, he asked me if there's any kind of program, something, uh, exemption for the small, basically for a small business.
Right.
I believe he did.
Well, this one, this one is.
He did.
And this one is specifically, and it's brand new, it's not, it's not, it hasn't been out very long, am I correct on that, Craig?
Six months.
It would have been under construction in thirteen.
Right.
Uh, I think not completed until early fourteen.
Right.
The same, same situation, exactly, they must have been built right the same time.
But I mean, this type of exemption is brand new into the.
Oh, yeah, well, uh, possibly, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I think it is.
What the, what the specific exemption allows for facilities like that.
Right.
I'm confident they have to meet certain criteria, it has to be certain amount of days.
Cause they are for profit, I mean, for sure, definitely for profit.
Certainly they are.
Yeah. Um, that's the one thing I had on his. Let's see.
He's on his way over there.
Okay. This is kind of a new one, Charles Parker, we have no items at this time, really, okay?
Yes, that's due to the time of the year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, okay.
And, uh, I asked, didn't put it on there like that because I may have some stuff coming in, even though it's holidays and all that, not worth it.
I just thought she didn't want us to get you out there, leave your name off.
Oh, no, no, no.
She, she did say you usually put some stuff in within three minutes before the meeting, so.
I'm notorious.
Yes, but.
Are you going north this weekend?
No, sir, no, sir.
What?
Have never gone to that part of nowhere and will never go to that part of nowhere.
You're just afraid they'll try to check you for that bell.
Well, they might check it, they wouldn't say.
Greg Slay, you got anything on here?
Nothing significant that I can see.
Good morning, good morning.
Yes.
Hey, John, let me ask you a question, and, and, uh, you probably answered me last time, but it's on, uh, under your part, under the Blake at Flowood. Um, I got back to ask, uh, Flowood again on, uh, were they allowing the exemption, I guess, on the Blake? And they said absolutely they were not going to because they were already in existence. And I guess this is a new, is this a new exemption that they came out with?
One that they applied for, yes.
I'm talking about, how long is the exemption?
To twenty twenty-three.
No, but how long has it been available?
How long has it been available?
This is the first year.
This the first year? Yeah, that's what, and I guess, uh, what I was asking, you remember, I think I asked about before, cause I, I knew that I had heard words that, uh, the, the City of Flowood was not going to exempt them on that and didn't know if that was gonna bring up a, uh, open up from other senior buildings that could possibly come to us after now, after these years and say, can we get the exemptions too, because this one's getting it?
Most definitely.
What are you gonna do about, what would, how would it affect the ones in the past? I'm thinking like.
They're gonna come and apply for exemption. I mean, I would if I had a nursing home, granted me one.
Well, you know, when Sid was building that new one in, uh, Richland, I thought he asked me a couple of years ago, was there any type of exemptions out there?
And it probably wasn't.
He did.
It is now, but it wasn't then.
No, it was there then.
What, did he not?
We just never have granted it.
Oh, was this something we need to grant, cause it's, huh?
My opinion?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
I mean, the City of Flowood didn't grant it, so why would we grant it?
Well, that's the reason I wanted to ask you about it.
Of course, I think y'all already granted it, but.
No, we hadn't.
Yeah, you have.
Huh?
This happened back in August when the, when they came in and had the public hearings.
You stay very right, because you, you addressed it at that time.
Well, I wish I'd, hmm.
You can go back and send it.
You know, when all those people came for the, we had some that protested.
Why is he even on here then?
This is to receive and accept the state's grant of the exemption.
Oh, God, I wish you'd have let us know more about that, cause I didn't. Cause this is gonna, I mean, I'm like you, anybody out there that has one, and it's not like, I mean, none of them are, if, they don't have to be new.
Well, y'all, y'all know exactly how I feel about exemptions.
Oh, yeah?
Well, I wish you would give me a, a, a sign on some of this thing, cause I would have, I think, I see the door opening up.
Well, the thing about it on, and this is just my opinion to y'all, if the municipality doesn't grant it, you darn sure shouldn't grant it.
Well, I didn't know they weren't gonna grant it till you just said that.
Well, that's what I brought up that day, I said, I just heard words that they were not going to, they had not formally, had not granted it at that time.
We should have done it pending their, them then or something.
Well, one thing that we can consider is that, you know, this one is pretty significant in terms of its economic impact and its size and the number of residents that it will house, that type thing. And you can, you can indicate that this one is, is different.
Not me, I'm not going there.
I'm saying if somebody else comes up and they've got a sixteen bed, so you can let them know.
No, that doesn't, uh, not getting to that one.
That's the reason why I asked the questions the day that I did.
Well, I wish we'd have known more.
I can become more vocal and give my opinion more if you would ask.
That would help tremendously.
Well, the thing is, it's not non, it's not nonprofit, it's for profit and everything, so I mean.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
I don't know many of them that are, are not, I don't think we have a nonprofit, do we have a nonprofit in Rankin County for nonprofit?
Keep exempting.
Well, I mean, you have nonprofits, but.
I can see some of these, they still make a profit.
They still make a profit.
Most definitely.
Well, there's one that I know that was trying to come out four sixty-eight not too long ago, and that one. And that one, the community basically helped to be able to keep that one out. That was going to be a for nonprofit, for sure.
No, but for future, I'll say it again, I'm not for exemptions, TIFs, PIDs, PUDs, anything.
Like Voth Fabric.
Because all you do is you're going to, you're, we're paying for it.
Right.
I agree.
You give them an exemption, we're paying for it.
Right.
Well, Voth, like paper there, fabric in Florence, why, why do they get, I mean, where did they start qualifying for exemption?
They meet the criteria, and see, that's, I fill out the position statement. Then we give it to Rankin first.
That's right, Rankin first came to.
And they give their blessings and come to y'all with their recommendations. It's not my part to disagree with Rankin first, but I will tell y'all how, y'all know how I feel about exemptions.
I remember that now, because I had Tom Trox right there asking him about the Blake, that's exactly what it was. Was this not going to open a, open up a can of worms on?
I guarantee you one's going to be in here within about the first year.
Six cars.
One, two of them exempted.
Two of them.
So.
And you know, you can't, you can't turn him down, you didn't turn this one down. And I, I guarantee you first year he'll be in here.
Yeah, he knows about it, he knows about it.
No, I'm sure they all talked and they see.
He must have not known about it two years ago.
No, he knew about it, he wanted to know if there was any, if the board granted any exemptions for nursing homes. And I said, no, they haven't done that.
Till now.
Well, that's first I've heard this even.
Okay.
Was there any way to correct this?
I don't see one.
I can't believe that just came out of your mouth.
Normally, I would say that since it's gone through this hard end of the process, we're going to have our time.
I mean, for next year, next year, for till twenty-three?
Yeah, it's, it's granted for ten years up to, do they have to reapply to five, John? If we have to look back at the application and see how we did, sometimes we do these five, five.
The years the exemption applied for, it goes to twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-three.
It was applied for that.
So, they won't have to apply again.
Till twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes we do a five, five, uh, and they have to reapply at the end of year five.
Why can't we just make a policy then to do a five, five? Correct. Right.
See, they qualify for the exemption, it's just up to y'all to.
To a granite, correct.
And this one would be. We're going, the county tax bill would have been close to seventy thousand dollars on this one.
A year?
Alrighty.
Is there anything else y'all need to know?
No, I just need to know that ahead of time, I wish I, I mean, I.
Okay, I'll say it again, I don't agree with any exemptions, PIDs, TIFs, PUDs, PUDs, especially in Flowood. Especially in Flowood.
Well, you know, I know there are some places maybe that they are helpful, but in a situation like a nursing home, I just can't see, see that, that's strictly for, strictly for profit, it's not like it's setting up huge numbers of employment and all that, so.
All these exemptions are profit.
Well, I know, but I mean, some of them do have large numbers of employment and whatever, I'm just saying, some of these are different, huh?
They're not going anywhere else. That's just my opinion.
Well, and some of the, some of these, do they have to reapply?
Some of them have to do it on an annual basis, y'all usually receive anywhere from, say, nine to thirteen. It goes to the fill out position statements, they will go to Rankin first and then they do and will generally always recommend the exemption.
Why?
Because they're bringing business into Rankin County.
That's the way they help get it in here.
On our dime.
But in some cases, so I don't know, some of it would come in here if they didn't get the exemption. And I guess that's fifty fifty.
And that, that is the argument that you could have with TIFs and things like that. They say, well, look at the economic impact that came in. So, there's pros and cons to it, but the TIF is something that's being abused.
Right.
TIF was tax increment financing and the purpose of is you bring a seed store in and grant that store.
Right.
And then if you build it, the rest will come, it's not to put four on each corner.
Alright.
Alright, well.
Thank you, John.
Alright, y'all need anything?
No.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Appreciate it.
Alright.
I tell you what, I'm going to see Tom and him, so why would you bring a nursing home?
Yes, good question for Rankin first, like I said, I do remember now asking those questions because I had heard that it was possibly not going to be approval on that. And I asked that and I told that that day, but.
Well, I, we wish, you know, for the future, well, I'm going to talk to them myself. I mean, that, they're trying to say this nursing home would not have come here.
It was already here.
Huh?
It was already here. It was already built.
They didn't build it as a result of having access to an airport.
Correct, it was already built.
They didn't build a cause of that.
Right.
Okay, well, we're here then, what, what are we going to do when, uh, the others start coming in here?
You'll have to come up with an explanation to do this, start granting.
Well, you're going to.
That's why we need the attorney to come up with a good explanation on that.
We need a way out of this one's what we need.
Well, don't forget that when they come, I think our process is they get routed to Rankin first.
Right, and that's going to be where we start.
If, if, if you feel strongly about the exemption, uh, recommendations from Rankin first being out of hand or getting out of hand, then I would make that information clear to Rankin first so that they can serve as a, a backstop where the request stops right there. Because until it comes as a recommendation from Rankin first, you guys don't deal with it.
Right.
So, it has to go to Rankin first, or?
Well, that's our, that's our program, I, I assume that that's a policy that we use because those guys employ a young man to, uh, the business community, and maybe that's part of the problem. But, uh, our policy is that we send those first to Rankin first, they make application to Rankin first, so you guys don't have to deal with that.
Well, in all honesty, I mean, fairness, I mean, here John's in a position now that he's going to have to say, if someone calls and say, do they, just like Diddy, they grant exemptions, uh, yep, they have. I mean, before he kind of covered by saying no.
You still have discretion.
Yeah, yeah.
You can still say, you may have done that, but we're not doing that now.
We're hard to tell this one, no, his is built at the exact, or done the exact same time this one's done. It's not like you can say, we're not going back in the past.
And we've got a couple in Brandon, so.
Well, if we did say no, what's his recourse?
Complete discretion, they can file a bill of exemptions with court and say that you made an arbitrary and capricious decision.
He meets the same criteria, he, he was, I mean, that'd be my, my argument, I met the same criteria.
I think at the end of the day, y'all's discretion is pretty strong, you get to decide whether or not exemption should be allowed.
Most times it looks like what we, what we're getting or what we should be doing is if we're doing this, it's unique in nature. As in, and I'm just going to name one out, just because it's not in Flowood, it doesn't matter to me, but it's Nucor Steel. You don't have any other type of facilities like a Nucor Steel, you just don't. They employ quite a bit of people.
You don't have any more Voth Fabric.
No.
Still.
So, there are.
I'm not so sure they ought to be exempted, but.
Well, you know, again, but then you've got the seniors' homes and stuff, you know, I don't know how many we've got in Rankin County, but all of a sudden you got one, now you got, that's why I said you've opened up.
There's a, a pretty, pretty big cottage industry, there's some lawyers out there who market themselves, specialists in the area of getting these exemptions. They actually make money off of the exemptions, they charge these entities some percentage of what they are able to save.
Oh, yeah, kind of like a grant writer, basically like a grant writer.
Well, you think about, uh, uh, you think about the Blake, uh, over time, without, you know, inserting a discount rate into it, just the raw numbers, that's going to be somewhere between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars of benefit to Blake.
Right.
They would pay somebody who helped them get that exemption some percentage of that.
What is the basis for the exemption? I mean, what, why, why's it even offered? Incentive?
It's an incentive and it's done at the state level. The county doesn't come up with this, the state legislature says if the businesses meet the certain, these certain criteria, they are eligible to request an exemption and the county is authorized to grant it.
If I'm not mistaken, now this is, like I said again, I'm, you might clarify this or you might check into it a little deeper. I think it's even more so into the, uh, health-related any.
Yeah, there's some specific.
Yes.
Exemption language in statutes that addresses particular businesses.
Correct, and I think they fall in that.
Related field.
Right. Right, and I think that's where they start falling into this category.
Why don't we, why don't we ask for an explanation since they leave John's office and go to Rankin first? Why don't we ask for a, a update from Rankin first on what criteria they use by which to recommend a tax exemption and have him present it to us at first available meeting, I know they're busy.
Well, I'm, yeah, I agree, neither is something and, um.
Oh, I agree.
In fact, I'm going to tell them, don't be bringing that kind of, that deal to us like that. What, I'm going to still let them know what they have created.
Right.
Very likely have created, snowball.
I, I'm almost positive going back in the minutes that I can tell them that's what's going to create, would that not create a snowball effect?
And that's, yeah.
So.
Did anybody tell, I don't know, did they, and I, I'm, did they say it was a nursing home?
Yeah.
I guess I missed something there.
Yep.
How many nursing homes do we have?
In Rankin County?
Oh.
Probably ten or twelve, I would say.
Yeah, and then you got, uh, you got some that are like, uh, uh, and I don't know, they'll fall in it too, they're like a, uh, adult daycare.
Right, and they quite possibly could fall in that too.
They're not a twenty-four hour, but the adult daycare, I guess so then, so I mean, I can see where they would say, hey, we're serving the seniors, I'm sorry.
We can tax our, tax exempt ourselves right on out of any taxes. Well, sorry, I opened that can of worms, guys, but I just wanted to bring it to, I didn't know if it was.
Approve.
Sheriff, let us have it, I'm not approve.
But there's no way to back out of that then, so what you're saying is this thing is.
Look at it, but it's, uh, it's highly unlikely at this stage.
So, I'm going to say something to Tom and them.
Approval of final resolution, I mean, I'm just, so it's already been to the state, so you can't talk to the state and say, can you reverse that?
And, and that, that is simply contention upon the State Department of Revenue saying that we have reviewed all this paperwork and it appears to be in order to us, and you're simply receiving that final adjudication from the state to put it in place.
Well, would you just look just and see, just to see?
And tell them we didn't receive all the information we needed, so we may need to relook at it.
Alright.
Not that I want to start a war or anything like that, but once we do approve that, that final resolution, it's done. There is no, then you got ten years. And it's probably a good timing, you know, since today is what, Tuesday? Wednesday, I'm sorry. Hardly have, everybody be open. Yes, yeah. Alright, got anything else? Ms. Laura? Okay.
I make a motion to discuss the need to go into executive session.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Keith, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. How you doing there, Brian? Still recording, guys? Hey Dale, don't forget you're recording still, just because you slapped me, buddy. Wait till you outside that door. We don't see y'all, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving.
See you later.
Hey, L State.
Hey, Buster, I have a question for you, how can you, uh, how can you find, uh? You got a dozen lined up, you get my staff, it's me and I was about to open up the door, and they're making money.
That, that really.
No, I know.
That's a million dollars down the road if they all come on board. Oh, I'm telling you. A year. I'm telling you. John will tell them, he's there, you know, I told you they weren't, but they are now, so they all go out and apply, why wouldn't you? I'd be mad if you didn't tell me and I don't go in.
Right, I just wish whenever I asked that question, they would have, I could have got more answers from them, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get anything, they just said they thought this would be, I'm going to call them as soon as I get out of here. And so, Larry and Tom, both, man, y'all realize what kind of, what y'all have opened up?
We're still being recorded, guys.
It's alright, they want to double check it, that's what I said.
Me?
Who, me?
Who, me? Alright. So we voted for a need to go in executive session, what have we got the, uh, what is that gonna be on?
Oh, we still recording?
We're still recording.
Oh, well.
Okay, we have, uh, personnel, we have potential litigation.
Okay. Alright, so do I have a motion to go in executive session to discuss personnel and possible litigation?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Keith, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion carries, we're in executive session.